Ms. Cooper?
Yeah. Twice.
Okay, we have reached the six o'clock hour. We are going to begin this meeting. And do we have anything to report out of closed session?
No action.
No action to report this evening.
Okay, is there any public comment on closed session items? Seeing none, we can say our pledge of allegiance.
We'll call.
What? Robin, would you take the role?
Yes ma'am, Councilmember Greenow.
Thank you.
Here.
Councilmember Short.
Here.
Councilmember Foman.
Here.
And Mayor Pro Tem Keim.
Here. Okay, so, any member of the audience is invited to address the city council on any matter that is within the jurisdiction of the City of Crescent City. Comments of public interest or on matters appearing on the agenda are accepted. Note however, that the council is not able to undertake extended discussion or act on non-agendized items. Such items can be referred to staff for appropriate action which may include placement on a future agenda. All comments shall be directed towards the entire council. Any comments that are not at the microphone are out of order and will not be part of the public record. After receiving recognition from the mayor, or Pro Tem in this case, please state your name and city or county residency for the record. Public comment is limited to three minutes. The public is additionally allotted three minutes each in which to speak on any item on the agenda prior to any action taken by the council. Alrighty, is there anyone that has some public comments?
Public comment, in the Sutter County. I know you folks, you fine folks voted for, to send y'all to Japan for $12,000, whatever, but I want you to realize that when Japan sent you guys over there twice, they spent disaster fund money to get you over there. Secondly, you folks spent grant money for their lodging and for the ceremony here. So two wrongs doesn't make a right utilizing money that is not intended for these types of expenses. The county is also, according to this newspaper, is using the budget of the board to send four people to Japan. So, you know, and then the harbor is sending his guy, which nobody was interested, the harbor wasn't interested, now all of a sudden it is. But I got a great idea for you. I don't know why you don't pay it out of your own pocket because you can claim it at the end of the year for taxes. And you can get that money back if you're so passionate about it. Instead of utilizing taxpayers' dime, you ought to learn how to tighten up your purse strings, start using that 55-inch television that's still in the box in the conference room on the second floor of City Hall and use it for teleconferences instead of paying this money out without any thought, any thought about it whatsoever. I am disgusted about the whole matter. You folks, I'm telling you right now, Mr. Short and Mr. Mayor who's not here tonight, B. Lake in Square, I will make sure you are not voted back in for your reelection. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Sutter. Anyone else with some public comment?
Hi, Hannah Honer, Delmar County. This is Malcolm. He's not a voter. I just want to say very quickly, then I will take my little horde home with me, that I was fortunate enough to be a part of this Japan process. And I think it's very worthwhile. I think the fact that people have been so hateful and angry about it is a miscommunication. I think that we should come together as a community, not misuse funds. However, we should be a part of this program, we should be a part of this relationship. And it pains me and makes me very sad that people are so hateful. Thank you.
Thank you, Hannah. Any other public comment?
Hi, Eileen Cooper. Well, I guess I can't help noticing the controversy surrounding everybody going to Japan. I, I really think that sending two people strategically would have been the proper and conservative thing to do. When I did learn that this poor, the poor community in Japan is actually spending their disaster funds to host us, I think it's a terrible abuse of your discretion. I would like to see just the county engineer to gather information and perhaps a lead delegate from the city, two people, that's it. And I would like to them to be in charge of gathering important information. But I, I just really question how much is gonna be gleaned from this whole entourage going there. And I, I think it's, it doesn't serve Japan, that, that community, our sister community very well when they have to spend all of their disaster money on our huge delegation. So, I, I, I don't, don't do it in my name, thank you. And also, this is a compostable cup. It's not fossil fuels, it's corn. And we should pass a resolution saying that in Delmar County and in the City of Crescent City, we will, if you want to do business, we will have only compostable cups because all this plastic is ending up in our ocean and it's not right. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cooper. Anyone else?
Peter Craig, Delmar County. I'd just like to support you in supporting the sister city relationship. I know it's an important commitment that we've made in the past and the future relies on a relationship that takes more than a Skype. It takes that, that time. And relationships are very important to not only the project, but I'm sure that they will bear fruit in saving lives. You all know of the relationship that Crescent City has with tsunamis. And so, as noted online, controversy really is about people who are uneducated about the 31 tsunamis that have hit Crescent City in this last hundred years. And so, I know, I would be happy to have you spend my tax dollars on the relationship and the trip and future trips as well. Thank you.
Thank you for coming this evening. Anyone else?
Kylan Honer, President of the County. I would like to voice my support of the sister city relationship and sending the delegation. I went on the last delegation. I paid my way, so, as most of the members of this delegation will be doing. And further, when the delegation from Japan came here, the Trees of Mystery and the Forest Cafe hosted them. We donated and we, we hosted them, you know, we gave up. We think that it's a very, very important relationship. As far as the benefits to this, I think it really, mostly educational but also economic. One of the things that I learned when I was over there is that they're growing and they have a whole industry around strawberries and tomatoes. And that's interesting because they're on the same, roughly the same parallel as we are. And they grow these year-round and they have a giant industry around that. They have the same weather, the same conditions. We have a lot to learn in terms of possibly oyster farming, produce. If anybody wants to sell their wares, we now have a connection to Japan. We can sell our wares there possibly or set up those relationships. It's really unimaginative to say that this isn't worth it or that it's not going to be worth it economically, socially, educationally. Our children going over there is invaluable in terms of expanding their minds and exposing them to the world, to a major economic superpower. There are not a lot of communities in the whole of the United States that have this opportunity, you know? It is very special and I just would like to voice my support.
Thank you very much, Kylan. Anyone else with some public comment?
Hello, my name's Brad Keim. I'm a resident of the city. I too went to Japan and paid my own way. When, I'm Heidi's husband, so, when she came home and told me that, that they had done this, I, I knew there was gonna be problems. I'm very frugal with our money and I wasn't really sure I agreed with it. But then, when I found out that the money was being, coming from the money that was budgeted for travel, it makes sense to me. I just hope that you guys stick to that budget and don't expand on your travel for other things. As far as the City of Rikuzin Takata, it is part of their charter that they reach out to other communities. Crescent City isn't the only one. When we were there, they had people from, I believe it was Syria. They tried to use their position and their loss to help other people. And that's what they are doing by trying to create this relationship with us. I see many, many benefits of having this relationship. I hope, you know, my children can go over there and I'm, I'm in the Rotary, I'm trying to create a relationship with their Rotary Club and have a cultural exchange among young children. I'd like to see my kids go stay with somebody their age there in Japan and then have them come here. As Kylan said, there are many economic benefits as well. I've heard of people who have been looking at bringing Japanese sake here and there is a lot to learn from them in their agricultural department as well as fishing. So, with all that said, I am for the sister city relationship. Just, I do care, ask that you care what you do spend our money on. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Keim. Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Hillary Fawning. I'm a Delmar County resident. If I could just switch gears here, I just wanted to come and talk about Brother Jonathan Park. And actually, the play structure, I think, is officially on, I think it's called Frasier Park. And anyways, just in need of some attention in TLC, there are a couple of latch, like gate latches that aren't working, so then, you know, so we can't keep it secure in there. One side of the fence is falling. We were kind of thinking maybe just some bark. And, you know, just some things like that. And then obviously, the biggest issue that's affecting the park right now is the big structure that's missing that had to be taken out because it was a safety issue and I totally understand that. And I know that there are funds allocated for it, but maybe aren't coming until the next fiscal year. And just makes me sad thinking about going into the summer, you know, in the tourist season with basically half the park missing. And, and I just was thinking that maybe if the funds could be allocated a little sooner, things could get ordered sooner and get it back up and running full 100% before that starts. The location is great because it's a neighborhood park, plus it's, you know, for the tourists that are right there at Brother Jonathan. And I frequent it along with another group of moms on a regular basis with its younger kids. And it's, it's easier to go to that park than Kid Town because of the visibility and the ability of the equipment. So, you know, we kind of have been using Kid Town in the process and we still go, but to Brother Jonathan. So they're, just would be much more enjoyable if the whole park was there. And then the other thing I wanted to say is I'd like to offer my services if you haven't picked out the equipment yet and I could help you check that out, maybe save you some money. And, because I kind of know what, you know, our age kids or that age kids would be looking for. So, who could I talk to about that? I don't, if, or if you, can somebody contact me about it? And I would be more than happy to help. Also, we don't mind doing any of like the weeding or anything like that because we spend a lot of time there, but we kind of want some things to maybe be done first before that. Okay, thank you so much. And, and I am also in favor of the sister city and the relationship and the, and the trip as well.
Thank you very much. We'll, we'll get in touch with you about Brother Jonathan. Thank you. Anyone else with some public comment? Okay, seeing no last chance, no other public comment. Okay, we're gonna close public. And we are, we have no ceremonial items, no reports or presentations this evening. So we're gonna move on to our consent calendar.
Motion to approve the consent calendar?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. And when Robin is ready.
Public, public comment.
Sorry, I wanted to make sure we made that contact.
Oh, we need to do public comment first. My apologies. This is my first, my first council meeting. It's been an exciting one so far. Is there any public comment on our consent calendar? Seeing no public comment. We have a motion and a second?
And was the second?
Counselor.
Okay, Councilmember Greenow.
Yes.
Councilmember Short.
Yes.
Councilmember Foman.
Yes.
And Mayor Pro Tem Keim.
Yes, thank you very much. And, yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna postpone number nine on our agenda until we have all five council members present.
We'll need a, a motion and a second for that.
Okay, can I get one?
Motion to continue public hearing on our fee schedule until June 4th, 2018.
Second.
Councilmember Greenow?
Yes.
Councilmember Short?
Yes.
Councilmember Foman?
Yes.
And Mayor Pro Tem Keim.
Yes, thank you. Our continuing business, our presentation on local hazard mitigation plan, City of Crescent City Annex and the five-year update. Mr. Taylor.
Good evening.
Welcome.
So if you recall the last meeting, I gave a quick presentation of letting everybody know that public comment period's still open for the five-year update for our hazard mitigation plan. But at a time, as I let you know, I'll come back, come back tonight to really go over the city's annex. So this is the city's portion of the plan. I'll give a quick overview of the countywide plan and then we'll focus actually on the projects that were in the previous five-year plan and what we're proposing for the update. And so we'll certainly be looking for any type of input on that. My spectacles on here, something to see. So the plan is actually, it's rather large, so as everybody knows, it's on the website. If you go to the county's website, there's a link to the plan. I encourage everybody to take a look at it. A lot of data in there, a lot of facts and figures. There are two volumes. Volume one is a countywide kind of overview of all the planning partners. And then, volume two has each of the planning partners' annex or their mitigation plan specific for their jurisdiction. So, volume one will have, has goals set in it with the kind of overriding goal to reduce the vulnerability to natural hazards in order to protect the health, safety, welfare and economy of Delmar County. And of course, you see there's other five goals there to go along with that. And of course, that's what the plan's all about, right? This is for planning for pre-disaster and post-disaster mitigation. And then next, in volume one, you'll see in small print, but they'll have objectives set out. Now, these objectives aren't really subsets of the goals themselves, they're standalone items. Just for example, one there you see, consider impacts of hazards in all planning mechanisms that address current and future land uses within Delmar County. So again, it's consider hazard mitigation and all land use and planning that we do. Seek mitigation projects and provide the highest degree of hazard protection in cost-effective manner. One other example, enhance emergency management capability within the planning area. So, again, this is about working with our planning partners and coming up kind of countywide programs and plans. Again, so it's focused on the countywide plan here. So you'll see there's hazard risk ranking. So all the planning partners kind of identified what we thought were the highest risks to the county. And of course, these are also in our plan that we have in place now. And they're ranked. So you can see earthquakes, tsunami, severe weather, wildfire, flooding, landslide, drought, sea level rise and dam failure. And obviously, each planning partner might have these in a different order. For example, for saying Gasky wildfires might be a top priority for them, where obviously earthquakes and tsunami are probably a higher priority for the city. One other thing, this really wasn't in the hazard risk ranking, but climate change, and this is, will be considered in all planning decisions. So, as you see in the countywide plan here, you have different mitigation measures that were set out. For example, to encourage and develop an implementation of a countywide hazard mitigation public information strategy that meets the needs of all planning partners. So as you know, this county OES kind of spearheads at right now about getting information now, especially for tsunami hazards or evacuation plans and things of that nature. So again, within the countywide plan, we have projects that are geared towards serving everybody in the county. Again, if you look at CW five and six, that's about, you know, statements saying that the steering committee and the planning partners will stay together, will review this plan once a year, and of course, we're all dedicated to the five-year update. So volume two, as I already stated, is a city-specific mitigation plan or mitigation strategy. Again, it's a little picture from the '64 event. City priority hazards, and as I said, each jurisdiction will have these and list and rank of their priority for their jurisdiction. Of course, for us, tsunami was highest on the list, followed by earthquake, severe weather, flooding, drought, then landslide, wildfire, sea level rise and dam failure. As like, they're kind of lower for us, dam failure, none at all, as you see. But again, if you look at, there's a picture of the Brother Jonathan lookout there. You can see, you know, you look at it, you see landslides, but of course, those were caused by severe weather. So for us, obviously, severe weather happens quite a bit, tsunami's happened quite a bit. So that's why you see the ranking, right? Their probabilities, kind of like we went over with the flood damage prevention ordinance, right? What's the probability of a certain event happening within a timeframe? And so, through the plan, they go back and look at all the different events, how often they've happened. And you see here, here's a list, kind of a historic list of all of the hazards or events that have happened, sorry, that have happened in Crescent City over the years. And you see that stretches anywhere from 2016. Of course, they have all the different events on here. And if you look on the far right-hand side, those are kind of the damage assessments or damage that was caused in dollar figures. Going all the way back to 1972, severe storms and flooding. So we know historically, these things happen, they're gonna continue to happen. Again, this was severe storm damage that happened to us back in 2000, I believe, around 2009 or prior to that. We had some high winds, I believe 90 mile an hour plus winds during that event. This is interesting, this is the Masonic Lodge, this is a picture from 1925. You don't think of tornadic activity in Crescent City, but this actually did happen, ripped the roof off of the structure there. We have had that, other events as well. So City of Crescent City mitigation plan. So, first list you see here is what is currently in the plan. This was approved in the original. As you see, these are just different actions and activities that were, or projects that we proposed for mitigation strategy. If you go down to C3, we slightly modified this action, I'll go over that. See, CS5, structural, non-structural seismic retrofit, a city fire hall was in there. It's important to identify these projects upfront. As you know, 2011, we had a tsunami, declared disaster. Because it happened in our county and our city, we were put on a priority list for funding. We subsequently applied for this project, we received grant funding. And of course, as you all know, we were able to complete the seismic retrofit of the fire hall this year, or actually, 2016, I believe that was finished. Again, these are other actions that were, are in the, currently in the plan. Again, there's the fire hall project that was completed. So that's why it's important to list these upfront. As I presented the last meeting, a lot of this is geared towards being able to get the grant funding and disaster assistance if needed. So here, this is what we have for the proposed action plan for this five-year update. I can go through these one at a time if you like, or we can just do that. So one, so Crescent City, one, where appropriate, support retrofitting, purchase and relocation of structures located in high-hazard areas. We kind of carried this forward from the previous plan, but this includes anything, our critical facilities, water lines, sewer lines and things of that nature, so we recommend leaving that in. Number two, integrate the hazard mitigation plan into other plans, ordinance and programs. So as you know, or if you're not aware, the hazard mitigation plan has been adopted as part of our general plan. So it, it is a consideration for all of our policies and plans that we conduct in the city as well as our local coastal plan as well. And we should continue to integrate hazard mitigation planning in all of our decisions and it should be something we think about. CZ3, actively participate in the planned maintenance protocols outlined in volume one, I kind of went over those already. That's participation with our other planning partners. Number four, continue to maintain a good standing and compliance under NFIP through implementation of flood plain management program. As you all know, we just went through that process, so we're in good compliance there and it should be for quite some time now. Number five, identify and pursue strategies to increase adaptive capacity to climate change, including not limiting to conducting analysis of sea level rise. This is something we are required to do, so we are... This is something we are required to do, so we are actively seeking grant funding to get a plan. Fortunately, in Crescent City, a lot of studies indicate that the land mass is rising or outpacing the sea level rise at this time, so, but it's something we are actively seeking. Six, retrofit wastewater treatment plant MBR to accept backup generator. This is something we added in this year, so hopefully, if grant funding comes available, we'll be able to secure some funding to make that project happen. There we go. Seven, this was slightly modified. As you know, all our flood maps were changed this year. So we no longer have those VE zones all over the city. We're mostly looking at A zones and X zones. The problem we have with the A zone now is they don't give you a base flood elevation, so we're trying to determine what that is. Right now, we've been leaving it up to the property owners to make that determination, you know, basically hire an engineer, give us that determination. So seven, survey FEMA designated A zone to determine base flood elevation. So hopefully, if some funding comes available, we'll be able to do that as well, be able to provide that information for people coming forward with their projects. Eight, conduct coastal bluff stabilization to prevent shoreline retreat and protect public infrastructure. As you saw on one of the slides, we obviously have an active slide going on. We don't want to lose the road and the overlook and the other facilities that we have out there, so we'd like to keep this on as well. Hopefully, we get funding for this project, or if anything comes up in the future, it's identified. Nine, upgrade and install additional storm drain lines to relieve periodic flooding in downtown Crescent City. As you know, this is a project we're actively seeking funding for now, so we'll continue to do that. Eleven, develop a post-disaster action plan. I believe there's a countywide plan, but we'd like to see something specific to the city. Establish continuity of operations plan with phased return to normal operations. Again, we also like to see that specific for the city. Obviously, post-disaster preparation is huge, you know, what happens? We do have a huge event, how are we going to continue to run the government and keep the city running?
Keep the water flowing.
All those good things, yeah. Thirteen, identify existing structures, not up to adopted IBC through aggressive code enforcement. That's an ongoing program, we continue to do that, and that would be international building code. And fourteen, consider participating in NFIP's community rating system program. We're doing a lot of those things, so we'll look into that. Biggest thing with that could give some discount for insurance rates. One of the things that was suggested that possibly we look at adding the retrofit or upgrade to the, our police station as a standalone project, which I think is probably a good idea, so we might want to identify that. So, I'll take any comments, any input, obviously is welcome at this time. This is going to be our last opportunity to make changes to the plan before it goes, and obviously, it'll go to OES and FEMA for approval, and it will come back to the council for final approval and adoption.
Okay. Gentlemen?
I don't have anything. Thank you, Eric.
Thank you for updating us on all that. What's that?
Yeah.
Yes, we will. We'll take public comment on our hazardous mitigation plan. Public comment? All right. Seeing as none, we'll move on to our next order of business. The final draft project initiation document. Oh, number 11, I'm sorry. Under new business, we are going to have a staff report from our finance director on our PERS unfunded liability payment.
Good evening, Mayor Protem and council members. So this item before you tonight is a follow-up from our budget workshop last week, Friday before last. So at the budget workshop, we talked again about the PERS unfunded liability, which at our last audit was just under $9.2 million. It is a 30-year amortization plan over which we will pay over $21 million if we just pay the minimum that is scheduled. And also, as I've explained before, those numbers change every year, but that's just our estimate at this point. So at the budget workshop, the council directed for us to include an additional payment in the next budget year to make next year's payment approximately equal to the payment we made this year, so that's $33,000. I was asked to bring back two possibilities to the council. So we have safety PERS plans, and we also have miscellaneous. The reason that this matters to the budget is if we send an additional $33,000 payment next year, we'll need to tell CalPERS if we want that applied to the safety plan liability or to the miscellaneous plan liability. Either way, it's going to help with the city's overall unfunded liability, it's just which fund is going to pay for it. So if we direct it toward the safety plan, that's all general fund, because police and fire are only in the general fund. If we direct it toward our miscellaneous plan, it will impact all of the funds. It's up to council to make that decision. My recommendation would be that we apply it to the miscellaneous plan so that not only all funds are sharing in that upfront cost in the upcoming year, but also, all of the funds will have the long-term benefit of making that early payment and reducing the interest. Do you have questions, or?
We talked about at the workshop.
Yes. It sounds like good.
Very accurate summary.
Planning for the future, saving ourselves some money. Yeah, I like it. Do gentlemen have anything else to add? Questions?
No, thank you, it was very straightforward.
Okay. So do we need to, do we need to vote on this, or consensus, or?
Public comment first.
Maybe public.
Okay, public comment?
You surprised?
No, well, welcome.
Thank you, honey, you're so kind. Anyway, Linda Sutter again. I do have a question.
Yes.
Because when I first read this, I was like, oh my God, you know, are they, are we worried about people not getting their pensions? And then, then I went and started reading the whole thing, and then, now I have a question. This money that you're taking out of the general fund, and the sewer fund, and the water fund, and a couple of others, right? To make that $33,000 payment?
Yes.
Is it, it's coming out of those funds?
The vote, the decision that we would be making is whether we take it out of one fund, the general fund, or if we spread it out.
Okay, because the question is, oh, thank you. The question is, is that the sewer fund is a restricted fund. And we went to Sacramento and asked to have a zero percent, am I misunderstanding this? To have a zero percent loan so that we could repay our loan on the wastewater treatment plant. And so, there should be no money coming out of the sewer fund, because if we had a hard time making that payment, then why are we taking nearly $10,000 out to, to pay this extra $33,000? Equally, the water fund, you know, our water rates have gone up because we were told that pipes needed to be placed, this, that, and the other. And so now, we're going to take money out of the water fund, which is a total of $17,000, maybe close to $18,000, which is questionable. So I'd like a little more explanation on that, thank you.
Okay, Linda, would you like to share your expertise?
Sure. So, it's not like the water fund and sewer fund would be making this payment on behalf of the general fund. The water fund has a liability to PERS. The sewer fund has a liability to PERS. The general fund has a liability to PERS. So it's just a question of, do we want to pay only on the general fund's liability, which would come out of the general fund? Or do we want to pay a piece out of each fund for its own liability? So the water fund and sewer fund would be making this payment eventually anyway, but if we make it now, we're saving some interest.
Thank you. I can't recognize you unless you're up at the podium.
So, I'm sorry. The general fund is, why would you take, I don't, I, I'm not getting this. The sewer fund and the water fund has to pay for their liability, but the general fund, uh...
There's two liabilities.
Yeah, there's two liabilities?
There's a miscellaneous.
And a public safety liability.
So, but, but the public safety comes out of the general fund, right?
Mm-hmm.
So then, why would it come out of the sewer and the water? It doesn't, okay. Then we'll, okay.
So the, the decision that we're making is do we spread it out over all of the funds, or do we just take it out of the general fund? Thank you for your comments. Any other public comment?
Irene Cooper.
Yes.
So, has the sewer and water fund, or any other fund that's in a deficit situation, have, are they respond, are they going to be making these payments anyway, but at a different time? Is that what I'm understanding? So is this not like a new burden for them at all?
It's not a new burden.
No. Because I, I would be worried if it was going to be in any way or form a new burden on a, on a fund that is in deficit, so, thank you.
We have a wise financial director, and she is trying to save us ultimately.
Millions.
Money on the interest. So that's, that's where this decision is, is coming from. Thank you. Okay.
Kent, I'm a Delmore resident. On this issue, I think that if you could one lump sum out of one fund to pay for everything, and that fund is going to be short on what it really needs it covered for. Now, if that being said, then I've had, I have to agree that the funds have to be spread it out, as long as somebody don't have a coke habit and pays off their coke dealer with it. I don't care how they get, as long as it's not misuse.
Thank you.
The buy themeers and whatnot, I don't care how it gets paid.
Thank you. Alrighty. Is that it? We're good? Okay. So, moving forward. We're done with public comment.
On the same lines, I agree that we need to spread out the cost among the funds so that one fund's not taking the entire hit. That's how I feel, so. I'd like to make the motion that we pay for the PERS, the extra $33,000 from all the different funds, and not just the general.
Miscellaneous fund?
The, yeah, the miscellaneous fund.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion in a second. Robin?
Yes, ma'am. Councilmember Greenow?
Yes.
Councilmember Short?
Yes.
Councilmember Follman?
Yes.
And Mayor Protemkein?
Yes, thank you. Thank you all for your feedback. Moving on, the final draft project initiation document for Pebble Beach Drive pedestrian and bicycle improvement project.
I'd like to ask our project engineering manager, Nicole Sutterfield, to come up and address the council.
Welcome.
Thank you, council. At the March 5th council meeting, Jeff Schwein from Green Dot gave a presentation on the project initiation document. He went over all the public outreach and the public comment that was received, and the whole project as a whole. He also went through to explain option C was favored by the community through all the public outreach and public comment. The report was made available for public comment on, from March 5th to April 5th, and the only comments received were at the March 5th council meeting. And there is no other further fiscal impact because reports have already been paid for, so, any questions?
Wonderful. How soon, once this is approved, this final draft, do we have an idea or an estimate on when this might begin?
That would be the next agenda item.
Oh, okay.
So, I had a question.
Yeah.
With that public comment, were there any recommendations on structural changes to the project? And were there any made due to the public comment?
Yes, actually, there was. And so Jeff kind of explained that in his last presentation when we had the public on the community commonplace website. There is a lot of good feedback, and that's actually where option, option C came from, was from the public feedback, and that's how we came to the favored option. Does that make sense?
Okay. Because I had made the observation that I didn't feel that it was smart to put cement barricades in the middle of the road, or barriers, because you're putting something in the middle of the road for someone to run into. I just didn't think that was a smart idea. And it looks like it's still in here, so I'm really not interested in voting on, in the affirmative on that, if that's the case.
So the design is not adequate?
I don't think it is.
Just in that, just in that respect, correct? Just the?
That, and, and the painted bike lanes is kind of ridiculous, in my opinion.
So this is all just conceptual, it's not the final design?
Okay.
And a lot of those kinds of things look really good for funding, which we will be going over in the next agenda item. So, they're not set in stone, they, it's just a conceptual design.
Okay, so when we go to start the project, we're going to rehash this?
Absolutely, we'll go to the planning commission.
We can always remove things, we can always add things. This is just to get the funding? This is an application for funding?
It's just a conceptual design, and we're going to take that conceptual design and make it be the best that we can for optimizing funding.
Yeah, so this is a, it's a project initiation document, is, is what it is. And so it's really, like Nicole said, it's that conceptual component of it. So it's more of the, the bigger pictures of the design, it's moving the roadway over, it's, it's moving the, moving the roadway so it's closer to the Brother Jonathan park area there, widening out the overlook area, increasing the area for the pedestrian, class one trail on that west side there, on the ocean side. So the details that you're talking about, Jason, are important details, but those will come back before the planning commission, as well as to the council. Those are more design type of details, and one in which we need to think about, you know, the maintenance, as well as the, as well as the impacts. So, so those components will come back, but we'll move forward with the overall, like environmental assessment for moving the road over and some of those larger type concept components.
Okay. Thank you.
Sounds like a good outreach opportunity for you.
Yeah, it'll, I thank you for explaining it to me, so I appreciate that.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, yeah. I have the, the whole document and map at my office for a while, and, you know, when excuse me, patients would come in, we'd tell them, okay, you have, you know, options here to, to add feedback, and so, I guess not very many people did. But it, it was, it was an opportunity, so it looks like we'll have more of that.
I was going to say, just as long as this isn't the end of the process, I'm okay with it.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
Now, this is just the beginning of the process, and this is, you know, this is that master plan for Pebble Beach Drive. The other component of the Pebble Beach Drive project is the bank stabilization. So to give the council a quick update on the bank stabilization, that ER project, the emergency relief project that's funded through federal highways, and then is matched by, by state emergency funds as well, with only a very small local match, the local match is less than 3%. The, the federal highways match is 88%, and then you have about a, somewhere around a 9% or so match from the state. That project, which was funded for 5.7 million, is now funded for over $20 million. So on that, that emergency funding goes just to the December 2016 storm events, in which Delmore County, and I believe its Mendocino counties, are the only eligible counties for that particular funding. So we're looking forward to progressing forward on that bank stabilization, which now looks to have enough funding to complete the project.
Awesome, thank you. All right, so, what's that? So, what's that? Thank you. Do we have any public comment on our pedestrian improvement bicycle?
Eileen Cooper. I would like to compliment the engineering staff in finding a good alternative that puts the road away from the cliff. That is very important, moving it away and having less weight travel, heavy travel on that outer part of the road. And also pushing... Making the curve less severe, I think, is a great improvement to safety and also lessens the adaptations we have to make towards continual erosion of the cliffs. And that's a smart thing to do now while we're working on this. One minor detail that I had is that around the outside of the Brother Jonathan, that peninsula-shaped thing, that there's a trail there. I don't want to see too much dealing with future erosion on that trail, so I'd be a little careful about moving that as in and as we can and still have it nice along the edge, but not too far out, please. Otherwise, I think it's a very well-crafted, creative plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Sounds like you'll have the opportunity to share your wisdom, Eileen. Okay, any other public comment?
Hello, city council members. Thank you, guys. And thank you, guys, for making our Pebble Beach such a better place. I'm really excited for the bike and walking situation. I was just unclear about the projected timeline for this, and then dependent on that, how may it affect the triathlon, if it will at all? Thank you.
My name is Casey King.
Chief President of the county. Okay.
So, in regard to schedules, that was asked by the council earlier, and we are going to take another item up right after this one, which will address a component of the schedule. But really, there's two projects working hand-in-hand, as we just talked about. There's the bank stabilization, which needs to happen first, and then there's the active transportation funding of the actual realignment and pedestrian facilities for Pebble Beach Drive. So, we have the funding secured, to a certain extent, for the bank stabilization. So, it's going to be a matter of moving forward with the environmental, with our coastal permits, getting the design done, and then getting to that construction level for the bank stabilization first. Right behind it, we want the active transportation piece to follow. So, we're going to need to be applying for, I think it's cycle four for ATP, which is that next item to the council. That would... Hopefully, we would make our application this summer. It would be funded maybe this winter sometime, and so normally, the process takes a little bit of time. So, it'd be next year before we started the first phase of that project, which is the environmental kind of planning portion of the project. It's called PAEB. It's the Project Assessment and Environmental Determination Phase. That takes typically a year. Then that project... While that project's in that phase, we would be completing the environmental phase of our bank stabilization, which is going to occur hopefully immediately. Then that would go into construction of the bank stabilization at the same time as the pedestrian improvement piece would be in the design phase or the PSNE phase, the Plan, Specification, and Estimate phase. Then following... The following year, as the bank stabilization is now completed, we would then start construction for the actual street phase. So, long story short, the construction of the street, you're looking about three to four years down the road. It's a real similar process as to what Sunset Circle took. You know, it's that planning phase. Now, we're in the PSNE phase and the right-of-way acquisition, and then we'll be into construction next year. So, that's the hope for Pebble Beach is construction of the bank stabilization sometime around 2020, 2021, and then followed by this in '21, '22, '23, somewhere in that timeframe.
Okay, so we need to approve the final draft?
Yes. Move we approve final draft project initiation document for the Pebble Beach Drive pedestrian and bicycle improvement project.
Seconded.
Robin?
Councilmember Greenow?
Yes.
Councilmember Short?
Yes.
Councilmember Fallman?
Yes.
And Mayor Protemkein.
Yes. Very exciting moving forward with that. Okay, so, do you have a... Do you want to give us a little presentation on the next part? Okay.
Thank you again, council. So, as the Pebble Beach Pedestrian Improvement Project, PID, Project Initiation Document, it went over how much design C was going to cost, which the projected cost is $1,206,686. And it was also identified in the report that the active transportation is going to be the most viable funding source for this project. ATP, or Active Transportation Program, is a highly competitive grant process, which was developed by the California Transportation Commission. Senate Bill 99 and Assembly Bill 101 created ATP. With the addition of SB 1 funds, it actually doubled the amount of money that goes to ATP, which is awesome for us. It's still a highly competitive grant process. CDC, the California Transportation Commission, made a call for projects May 16th of this year, and our application is... Needs to be postmarked by July 31st. Staff wrote a letter to the Del Norte Local Transportation Commission asking for funds to hire a consultant to fill out an ATP application, since they're going to be more knowledgeable about it than we are. It was approved, and so this is basically... This report is basically having council approves... Approve a budget adjustment so that, you know... So, there's essentially no cost to the city other than staff time because we will be reimbursed. Any questions?
Okay. And this is the 88%?
This is... This is actually... No, this is separate funding. ATP...
There was one that was 88%, and then there was one that was...
So, the bank stabilization project is the one that's funded 88% by federal highways and then about 9% by state emergency funding, and then 3% would be local on that particular one.
Okay.
This project is real similar to the Sunset Circle split, and so it would be 80% funded through the ATP funds, which are allocated through Caltrans, and then the 20% would be a local match. Sunset Circle is funded with the 8% from ATP, and then the 20% actually is being reimbursed by the Local Transportation Commission.
Okay.
So, upon council approval, we would seek direction to go back to the Transportation Commission and request the local match be provided by them.
Got it. Thank you. Do we have any public comment on adopting this resolution? Okay. Do I have any motions?
Move we adopt Resolution 2018-24.
I'll second that.
Thank you. My microphone wasn't on, so just for the record, I move to adopt Resolution 2018-24, the city council of Crescent City, amending the fiscal year. Says 2017-2019 budget.
About 2017-18 budget on the resolution.
So, it'd be the 2017-2018 budget.
Seconded.
Thank you.
I have a motion and a second. Robin?
Yes.
Councilmember Short?
Yes.
Councilmember Fallman?
Yes.
And Mayor Protemkein.
Yes. Exciting stuff. Thank you. That's all we have tonight.
You are correct, other than just the end of the meeting discussion items.
Okay. Do we have any legislative matters?
We do not have any legislative matters to take up before the council tonight.
City manager report?
I do have a couple of items that I would like to talk to the council about, one in which we heard a little bit of public comment in regard to... And as I asked Linda to also remind me during this time that we had one other item. So, appreciate her methodology and that reminder. It's a lot more appropriate than some of the other things we discussed about as far as giving me that reminder. But we did hear a constituent talk about the Brother Jonathan Park, and really, it's Frazier Park. She is correct in that and the playground that is there. So, I am pleased to announce that we do have a community cleanup project that will assist in some of those repairs and painting of some of the facilities as well as spreading the wood chips. So, we are working with the... With Just Serve and the Interfaith Council on that. So, that's going to happen June 9th, in which we will have 120 yards of wood chips delivered to that particular park. And we, as a community, city staff and community members, will be out spreading those wood chips to try to improve the playground.
Thanks.
Also, in regard to the play structure, city staff did an inspection on that structure a number of weeks ago, determined that it was in an unsafe condition. And so, we immediately removed the playground structure itself. We have some of the components. A lot of it were just the clips and the attachments. So, we have ordered those clips and sort of connector pieces, and we'll be able to reinstall basically the same playset that we had previously. So, we had money in this year's budget, so we went ahead. We ordered those immediately, trying to get ahead of the summer season, and we hope to have those pieces by about mid-June.
Mid-June?
Well, that is...
Awesome.
Yes, that is the hope on that one.
That is the hope. All righty.
This funding never saw government move so quickly. There you go. Exactly. The people have spoken.
Spinning.
No. So, yeah, so that is a good project that we're looking forward to.
Awesome.
The other item that Ms. Lieber reminded me of is that the June 18th council meeting will be one in which we will have two council members out of the country, as well as myself, city manager, and our finance director. So, we're looking for direction from the council to possibly cancel that meeting and then postpone, or I guess move that meeting up to the June 12th date, which would be a Tuesday. So, we'd have a special meeting on June 12th. So, what I'm looking for tonight is just consensus from the council that that is the direction that we're heading, and then we'll place it on the agenda for an actual action item on the June 4th meeting.
I think we should do that, cancel that meeting, and then move it up to the 12th. Should I say back to the 12th?
Back, exactly.
What time will that cleanup be for the Brother Jonathan Park event on the 9th?
The cleanup typically takes place around 9:00, I believe, is the starting time. I don't have the flyer in front of me, but it's typically gets going pretty early in the morning. That's always been a pretty successful cleanup projects. Typically, we have performed it at the Kidtown Playground, and we get... If we can get enough people there, we can get it started, and we can get a lot done in about... Typically, about three hours. So, we try to start at about 9:00, and we're done about noon. So, that's the plan.
Yeah, they're awesome. Okay, thank you. So, can we just gain consensus on that 12th of June date? Does that work for everyone?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. We're all in favor of that.
Excellent. Direction received.
All righty. Any reports from council? Trainings? Anything?
I don't have anything. Thank you.
Nothing to report out?
I'm sorry, I don't either. I spent the last week at the National Fire Academy, so I didn't...
So, you can report out on the Fire Academy?
Had a great time at the National Fire Academy, yeah.
Where was that?
Chief DeLusby convinced me to go, and I'm certainly not sorry. It was very valuable training, so...
Awesome.
It was in Emmitsburg, Maryland, right next to Camp David. Beautiful, beautiful place there, and I learned a lot. Learned a lot. It was a good week.
Good. Mr. Fallman?
Guys are slacking. We both... We all attended the budget workshop and the city manager interviews. Like to welcome city manager Weir to our team, well, as a city manager. He's been with the city for quite some time. We also recently hired Robin Patch as our permanent city clerk. I'd like to welcome her aboard as well. Besides that, you know, I'd like to talk a little bit about what's happened on social media this past weekend. I don't want to talk too much, other than I don't feel like Facebook has been a very effective platform for us to discuss city business or political issues at all. There's an environment that exists on social media that is very difficult to get any point across to find any agreement. So, tonight here and now, I'm telling anybody that's listening or may read about this later that I am not going to post anything related to any political issue at any level of government on social media anymore. I won't do so much as like even one of my colleagues' posts. I may occasionally share a post from City Hall, but beyond that, I'm not going to use Facebook for any political activity, including any of my own election purposes. However, my email is afallman@cc.org. Is it? Yeah. CrescentCity.c c.org.
C-C dot Crescent City.
C-C dot Crescent City.org. My personal cell phone number is 707-954-7775. Please call me at any time if you have any concern, question, if you want to talk about something, but it's not going to happen on Facebook for me anymore. So, thank you for that.
Thanks, Alex. Thank you. Yeah, it's...
Well said.
Very well said. It's been a little troubling. I just... I am really excited for you guys to go to Japan. As someone that has been there twice, to Rikuzan Takada twice, we have vast, vast amounts of knowledge to bring back. And the first time we went, we were just meeting our friends over there, you know? We weren't sure if we were going to have a relationship or not. The second time, very, very different. We were pulled in and engaged highly. And now, this third time, the people that are going are EOC people, and I'm really, really proud to have you as our new city manager and you as our battalion chief to be going. And Linda, if we have a recovery that we need to take care of, we need to know how to pay for it all, and we need to know how to keep the water flowing and make sure that the community is taken care of. And so, for that, I stand by my decision. I'm very pleased. I hope we can do more. I hope that we can further invest in this community relationship with Japan and learn more. I look forward to it. And thank you, Alex. Thank you for the social media update. I appreciate it. It's been pretty shocking, and I'm just... I feel embarrassed. I feel embarrassed what our friends in Japan are thinking. That's all. Anyway, till next time, till we meet again, June 4th.